All right, good evening everybody and welcome to tonight's City of Sierra Falls Committee of the Whole Meeting for Monday, March 17th. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Schultz.
Here.
Latta.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Hawbaker.
Here.
Gienfield.
Here.
Christman.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
All members present?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Go to item number one, the College Hill Zoning Update Project. We've got Karen Howard. Quick context for this, so tonight, there is, as you saw in the packets, a recommendation that we'll be voting on at the end to give direction to staff on the direction we'd like them to go, so we will have an action item at the end of this for tonight's presentation, so.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Early last year, as you recall, the Council directed staff to move forward with an RFP seeking consultant services for, to move forward with the zoning updates for the College Hill neighborhood. And through a competitive process, the city hired CodaMetrix, who is a firm who works solely on drafting zoning regulations for cities across the country, that's their sole operation. And so tonight, as the first stage of the project is now completed, we have Leslie Oberholzer here tonight from CodaMetrix, who is going to present to you her Directions report, giving you what she heard from the public in her listening sessions, and also what she found in our current zone, her analysis of her current zoning on College Hill, and her recommendations for how to move forward. With that, I'll hand it over to Leslie.
Thank you, Leslie.
Good evening, I'm very excited to be here, happy to meet you all for the first time. So I'm here just to give you kind of a brief overview of where we are in the process. My agenda for this evening includes kind of a revisiting of the project's scope, what we were sort of assigned to do and asked to do, a little bit of a review of the current zoning that's in place right now, as well as a little bit of a review of the proposed directions report that you have in your packets. And then finally, we'll look at next steps moving forward. So in terms of the project, the RFP, and then I believe a memo that you all received, had a list of tasks to accomplish. And the first was to really confirm the validity of the vision plan. Based on that validation, then we were to look at how to implement this vision plan and update the zoning moving forward. As part of that kind of zoning update, it is meant to sort of evaluate and simplify the College Hill overlay. I know that there have been some implementation issues associated with the overlay, the kind of the complexity of it. Also, as part of the vision plan updating and really kind of focusing on areas one, two, and three, which are sort of the core of the neighborhood, and looking at how to write zoning, draft zoning that would best implement the ideas for that area. And part of the kind of focus on those areas one, two, and three is in order to stabilize and maybe take some of the pressure off of the neighborhood areas. And those are, as I will show you in the map, areas four and six and a little bit of seven and eight, and those are mostly what zoned R1 and R2 in the neighborhood right now. And then finally, as you will hear multiple times tonight, to improve parking policies and regulations, as is always a part of zoning. So the project was proposed to be in four phases. The first phase, that we're kind of towards the end of right now, is Phase One, the Directions report and the initial review and analysis. And this is where I kind of get my feet on the ground and take a look at the geographic layout of the area, meet with the people of the area, the stakeholders and staff, and kind of just learn a little bit more about where that vision plan came from, how it got started, as well as the overlay itself. From this point, we will head into Phase Two, which is the initial draft code, drafting the zoning regulations that we would propose for the area. This is a draft, it is a first draft, and it is meant to be sort of tested internally with staff, and we may meet with some other folks along the way, but it is, you know, meant to be that kind of dive-in first draft. From that point, we will sort of test it towards the end and then come up with a public review draft. That draft is sort of meant to be ready for public perusal and understanding. It will still be a draft at that point, but the idea there is that we will have a pretty solid draft that we can take out to the community and see what people think. Once we refine that draft, only then will we go forward with a kind of a hearing draft for adoption. So we are hoping to kind of work out all the kinks before we get to that point. So that's the final phase, the approval process. So as part of this first phase, Karen mentioned that we had a whole series, two days of listening sessions with over 50 stakeholders in the process. We talked with two groups of neighborhood residents, a couple of groups of property owners and landlords. We did meet with the College Hill Partnership, and then we also met with some business owners that weren't part of the College Hill Partnership meetings. We also met with UNI and student government reps, including Isaac, and also with the whole series of developers and architects that are currently kind of working in the area. And finally, the Bike and Ped Chair and Vice Chair. From these listening sessions, one of the first questions that I would generally ask is whether they were familiar with the visioning plan and what their sort of a feeling was. And this was meant to be that kind of first step in the validation of the vision plan. And what I found was, near, almost everybody was in complete agreement that the vision plan was something to be implemented. There may be details that still need to be worked out, as is always the case with moving from a plan to a zoning code, but the main focus of the conversation usually revolved around walkability and preserving that kind of core area, as well as stabilizing the neighborhoods by trying to get more student population into that sort of center core area. So just looking at the sort of summary of the plan recommendations, I've kind of regrouped them a little bit, and you'll note that everybody also mentioned parking, which I will probably bring up on every slide through here, but just to make sure that we're coordinating the parking supply and managing it very well, but also making sure that when we're looking at walkability, we're understanding that the private properties are sort of guiding that walkability. We're defining the edges of the street and the sidewalks with the buildings, as is the sort of historic character of the area, and making sure that we are reinforcing that with the zoning code. But it's also important to note that this is a very unique place within College Hill. Any sort of college, Main Street, or drag, or whatever you want to call the hill, is always going to be a fairly unique location. It's distinctive, it's got its own sort of set of parameters that we need to be sure that we understand when we're writing the zoning. And I believe that our conversations with the stakeholders really helped me especially to understand that pretty well. So this is a map from the vision plan that I've sort of highlighted the areas that we're going to be focusing on for the code. And Area One is the heart of College Hill, as it is called in the plan, or the hill, as most people refer to it. So that is the red areas that you see, and that's really, you know, College Street. Areas two and three are called General College Hill and University Neighborhood, and as I was saying before, Areas One, Two, and Three are kind of the core of the neighborhood. And that's really the area where we see the most change potentially occurring. In order to preserve Areas Four and Six with the Cerly Park Neighborhood, the Clay Street Park Neighborhood, East of Main Neighborhood, which is that sort of lavender or pink color that you see on the other side of Main Street, and then some portions of Seven and Eight to the north and the south. The southern portion in Area Eight is actually covered by the College Hill overlay right now, and so that's why it's been included. And we have heard some issues with some of the sort of contextual design of new development in Area Seven, and so we've pulled that in. I think that the limits of Area Seven especially will need to be looked at through the process, so the edges that I'm showing on this map right now are pretty rough. I also think that the edges that are currently shown in the vision plan between Areas One, Two, and Three are, need to probably push and pull a little bit, and I'll show you a map about that later on. That's of course in the packet in the proposed recommendations. So let's take a quick look at what the current zoning actually says in the area. So there's a series of base zoning districts that have been in place for a long time in the neighborhood. C3 as a base zoning district within the hill area, kind of down College Street. R3 and R4 are the multiple residence districts that sort of span across Areas Two and Three. So C3, R3, and R4 are kind of the core areas. Then R1 and R2 are within the neighborhoods. And then of course, we have the overlay, which is shown on this map in kind of that light blue underneath. So you can see that the overlay does not cover all of the areas within our proposed scope right now, but those are sort of the base, that's the current zoning that's in place right now. So just to quickly take a look at each one of these base zones, the C3 zone that's applied to the hill is your most intensive commercial zoning district that you have right now, and it is applied to a historic Main Street, which I don't think I've ever seen happen before, or at least this far in our world of preserving historic Main Streets. But the C3 zone allows for lots of heavy commercial uses, such as lumber yards and auto body shops and warehouses. The height that is allowed in the C3 zone is the sort of complicated allowance for heights up to 165 feet, which is like 16 stories, and it actually allows for towers to go even higher than that. And then building standards, there's really no standards except for when it comes in contact with our districts, which is pretty typical of a C3 typical zone. So all that said, all that base zoning, it's a completely inappropriate zone to be in place on this, in this location, but the overlay really addresses most of that. It doesn't allow those heavy commercial uses to occur, and it also requires a storefront on the ground floor and has build-two-zone standards and such, so it actually really addresses the building design and that height issue. So it sort of negates the whole underlying zoning. The R3 and R4 zones allow for single-two and multi-unit houses among some civic-like churches and schools and things like that. The R3 is a little bit lower in density than the R4 in terms of the minimum lot sizes that are required for it. However, I will note that almost all of the buildings in these areas are multi-unit buildings, and very few of them actually meet the minimum lot size. So that means that, and we heard this during the listening sessions from property owners, and incidentally, most of the property there is kind of a patchwork of owners, it's not one consistent owner that owns like a whole block face. And so if their lot doesn't meet the minimum lot standards, they can't rebuild. And what we heard from several of the stakeholders during the listening sessions, UNI included, was that something really needs to happen in these areas. The buildings are in kind of poor condition, and they've been around for a long time. And indeed, property owners actually want to redevelop them, but the minimum lot sizes keep them from being able to do so. So I think we can hopefully address that with the zoning, but, with a zoning rewrite. But there are currently no standards in the base zoning district for the building design. The heights are generally up to three stories, which is in character with the neighborhood. And then there are standards for multi-unit building design in the overlay though, so that does address some of that. In terms of the R1 and R2 residence zones, one- and two-unit residences are allowed, and in general, the lot sizes are pretty consistent with what you would normally expect to be in an R1 and R2. There are quite a few lots that are smaller than this, and we will take a look at that and sort of study that, but right now, we're not making, we're not proposing to make significant changes to that. We may come back to you with that. The sort of key piece here is that the overlay and the base zoning do not address sort of the garage location, and there have been several new developments in these areas that include garages on the fronts of the buildings, and the neighbors had complained, some of the stakeholder residents had complained about that. So in terms of the College Hill overlay, the first part of it is parking standards, and they are fairly consistent with most that you would see in the community. There are significant landscape standards as well, that I think are appropriate for the kinds of development that we're talking about. However, we do need to sort of make sure that we understand that some of these locations, especially within the core, are fairly urban in nature and small lots. So we want to make sure that the landscape standards are appropriate. The landscape standards are also fairly complex, there's sort of a point system, and I think we can address that and simplify that a bit. There is a series of design review standards, as I've mentioned several times, that are very, they address many of the kinds of things that you would expect to be addressed in this area. However, the way that they're written is many of the sort of shawl statements, like "you shall do this," are then written with fairly discretionary building design standards. So it's sort of hard to interpret, once it says "shawl," then it should be fairly easy to interpret it, but it's not in many cases. And then some of the "shoulds" statements actually are written with fairly objective language, and would be very easy to actually implement, but then there "shoulds," and so you don't really know where you stand and what's appropriate. There are some very good standards written in, especially about exterior stairs and materials, and as I said before, the storefront requirements are fairly objective, and they are written as shawls, and so we can carry that forward. What I like to do is carry it forward with some graphics and illustrations, just to make sure that it's a little bit easier to read, because every page looks like the page on your screen right now, and most modern zoning codes have illustrations in them. And as I've sort of mentioned several times, the overlay on top of the base zoning adds a kind of unnecessary level of complexity. There's really no reason to have the C3 as an underlying base zone. And I do think that in terms of the R3 and R4, we can carry forward what's there without having to have two layers of information. It just makes it more difficult for any user, and especially in this particular situation where you have a lot of sort of small property owners that own land that they want to redevelop, we should make it as easy as possible for them to get to what the regulations are. The sort of second difficult process, part of the overlay, is the process to get something approved. Right now, everything requires sort of a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and approval by City Council, which is about three months. It means that sort of simple changes to residential properties mean that somebody's got to go through this three-month process. It means that it's fairly unpredictable for all of these small property owners to do what they want to do, and especially if it's what people desire to have happen in that area, and so you want to kind of remove that barrier. But furthermore, what we've heard is that in terms of enforcement issues, if an inspector goes out and says you need to fix something, then they also have to go through this process, which doesn't really make a lot of sense. So I think that we can get that process simplified through a series of more objective regulations that are easier to read and understand. The current parking is, as you all well know, probably is one per bedroom in most locations, but in the sort of R3, R4 zone areas, one bedroom plus one visitor space for every five units. So in terms of one per bedroom, I would say, you know, nationally, that's probably not the direction that most places are going these days, but I think it's most important to sort of look at what you have on the ground in College Hill and see how it would fit. And so hopefully, this is a simplified version of looking at it, but if not, well, you know, we can talk. So on the left, what you see is a sort of typical lot, 135 feet deep, and you know, lots are all different widths, so I've just selected a 90-foot width. What you can typically fit on that lot is a double-loaded corridor building that you see in blue in the plan, and that means you've got a building that has a corridor down the middle with units off either side. It's a pretty typical apartment building. Usually, those are about 65 feet, they're 60 to 70 feet, so 65 feet. A parking lot, a double-loaded aisle of parking lot is also about 65 feet, and so that gives you about 130 feet of occupied depth. Not a lot of space for landscape buffers or sidewalks or things like that, but just to sort of simplify it, that's what you can fit on that depth of a lot. We'd like to see three- or four-story buildings in this area. What we heard, again, from the College Hill Partnership, from the business owners, even from the residents, that they want more residential units in the core area. And so in order to get enough units, you really need to be going to three or four stories. If we stack that 65-foot building If we stack that 65-foot building three or four stories, you get about 39 bedrooms, but you can only fit 18 parking spaces behind it. That's not one per bedroom. It's really not one per bedroom plus the visitor spaces. So what we can really only fit, and what the property owners and developers can only fit with this parking standard, is about a two-story building. So at this point, I'd like to just take a bit of a step back and look at the big ideas of the plan. Again, stabilize and enhance the neighborhoods, concentrate and intensify student housing near campus. And again, I heard that from the College Hill Partnership, the residents who say they think that concentrating student housing in that sort of core area will help release some of the pressure of students living in the neighborhoods. Reconnect Upper and Lower Hill, specifically the area kind of by the gas station and connecting, I think it's between 21st and 22nd. That is a 135-foot-deep parcel, or a series of parcels there. Add street trees and having some space for some landscape around those areas. Right now, with the parking as it is, you kind of can't fit it. Manage parking better, improve walkability, make biking easier, and increase retail and dining options, which we really can't do unless we get more people in that core area. And so what we're proposing for the parking direction, and again, this is, this is a sort of soft proposal at this point, but it is to maintain the no park, no required parking in the Area One. So right now, the overlay does not require parking for commercial buildings in, on the hill. In Areas Four, Six, Seven, and Eight, which are all the neighborhood areas, maintain the current parking standards. We don't really have as much of an issue there, although there is, there is some discussion that still needs to be had there. But really kind of focusing on the residential in Areas One and the residential in Areas Two and Three, and looking at the potential of reducing the onsite parking requirements in those locations so that we can relieve some of that barrier to new development happening in addition to the lot widths. Now, I have here reduce or remove onsite parking requirements plus other methods, and I think there's a whole host of other tools that we've been looking at at this point that we can add to. And in fact, often what we do when we're writing parking standards pretty much anywhere at this point is to sort of maintain some level of parking, minimum parking standards onsite, but then allow for a series of credits when you've got proximity to on-street spaces or proximity to public parking, or some other sort of off-site parking standard or shared parking agreement. We've written so that you can give a credit if they decouple the parking spaces from the actual units, so that only the people that actually have cars and want to pay to rent a space for their car do so, and then the students that don't have cars don't have to pay for that space. There are credits that you can give for Transportation Demand Management, or TDM, where maybe if they have a bike share program, the residents have access to a shared car, that they can get credit for their parking requirements. There's also potential for a fee in lieu of parking, where we can potentially create some other little, small, public parking parcels throughout the core area to occupy and to accommodate student parking. And then we've also been discussing a residential parking permit district that would allow for those on-street spaces to actually be used for the residents that are actually living there, as opposed to them having to provide off-site spaces. I think that we can work on this and try to push and pull it a bit through the process of drafting, if we can, you know, get direction to move forward. So that's sort of the parking chunk. The other part is the proposed structure of the code, and as I've said, I think that I would definitely recommend replacing the base zoning and the overlay with just a set of new zoning districts. Those new zoning districts should be mapped, very similar to your current zoning. So this draft that I'm showing you and that you have in front of you is sort of a first run at that. I don't know that those edges are exactly right, but the idea that we can create these new zoning districts that would work really well in this location and then could potentially be used in other locations as well, I think is what I would typically recommend in this situation. I very rarely recommend an overlay in any situation, unless it's something, you know, environmental, where the base zoning districts are generally still guiding the development, and it's just another layer of some other associated regulation. I would also recommend that the zoning district regulations be objective standards only, no discretionary language, not design guideliney, but objective standards that everybody can understand and everybody can interpret similarly. That just helps with administration. It helps developers and property owners to understand what the expectation is. It helps when officials are reviewing. It helps the neighbors to have a sense of what they can expect to happen next door to them. And as I said, to map the new zoning districts on the parcels, consistent with your current zoning map, as you see in this example here. Within that proposed structure of the code, what I typically recommend is to use building types as a way to kind of hang all the regulations on the code, in the code. For example, in the mixed-use area, I suggest using a storefront building type. Using that name helps everybody to understand what the expectation is in that location, and then we can organize it in such a way that all the regulations are on a couple of pages, which I'll show you in just a minute. Within the two neighborhoods, mixed areas, so these are areas two, two and three mainly, the areas where you have the sort of multi-unit mix of housing, if we can create a series of building types that would be allowed in all of those locations, that allows for the developer or property owner to choose which one is most appropriate for their site. So for example, if you've got a very long, wide site, and you've been able to kind of aggregate a series of parcels, then you could develop a series of row houses or a longer building, but if you only have a small site, then you can develop a small apartment building. And so if we set, set up these regulations to allow for that kind of mix of things to happen, with the idea that they can all work together along a street face, then that helps to accomplish most of the goals that we have for the area, including walkability. And then within the neighborhoods, I would propose that we use houses, twin houses, and two-unit houses, which are the house types that are allowed right now, and again, set a set of standards appropriate for those with, you know, addressing the garage location within them. And right now, the only sort of design review standards that are in the overlay talk really about just the context and making sure that the design fits within the context, and I'm not sure that that's really clear to everybody involved, what that means. And so if we can sort of come up with a series of standards that are pretty simple, I think we can get at that, and in fact, I do this on a very regular basis for these kind of older neighborhoods. And so using the building typology for the College Hill area, we can create a series of standards that are in a table format keyed to illustrations, which allows us to show people what it is that we expect to see happen. We can also use photographs and images, again, to convey that, but using a sort of simple format that's a little bit more interesting to, to look at, you can also go directly to the building type that you're aiming to develop, as opposed to having to read pages of text. It can help to get to what you're looking for more quickly. Also, we would propose to utilize the existing use categories that were recently adopted, and then were used in the downtown. That series of categories can be used in a table format for the area and will help us to sort of address those issues of what kind of commercial uses should be in the, on the hill. And then in terms of architectural standards, that's something that we'll bring back, but definitely carrying forward sort of the intent of the overlay, but hopefully less discretionary and more objective. There are a series of architectural standards in your current character districts, and I would like to not sort of duplicate that information, but if we can figure out a way to simplify that and use it in more of a user-friendly fashion, then I would propose that we do that. And then finally, just if we can get to clear, objective standards, I think we can get to a quicker review and approval procedure. An administrative site, your current administrative site plan process would make a lot of sense. However, we do need to make sure that we're incorporating some kind of relief and flexibility in there, and right now, the character districts have a proportionate compliance and a minor adjustment, adjustment process that's pretty consistent with what I would normally recommend. And so we can sort of carry that forward and use those kinds of processes to incorporate some relief and flexibility into these more objective standards. So finally, just to, again, look at the steps, what we aim to do here is to head into that drafting phase, and I am most interested in sort of the structure of the code and making sure that we don't move too far forward with this type of structure into the drafting and to, to the next phase, so. Questions?
Okay. And with that, excuse me, I'll open it up to the group. Again, the goal for tonight is to give enough, the high-level direction here to let them start moving forward. So if there's things you have particular support for, interesting concerns with, we can discuss them tonight, and then the goal will be to get a little vote at the end, though, on giving some direction forward. Obviously, we have a lot of steps left in the process, but this is kind of where we want to give that high-level guidance to make sure what the consultant and staff are working on is based on the guidance we want to give. So with that, I will open it up to council for questions.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you for, excuse me, thank you for the presentation. Very interesting, a lot to digest. Question I had, I see you've evaluated the areas one, two, three, and through seven. Left out five, I'm not sure why, but there's probably a reason for that.
Is that Main Street?
I think it's the fire station.
It's Main Street, following on Main Street. But anyway, that's fine. Looking back at some statistics on the percentage of the properties around the campus that are renters, and obviously, as you get closer and closer to campus, the intensity of the renters is close to 100%. They have a table in there from the previous visioning where they show an area 18th to 23rd is 77%. Cerley Park neighborhood, 67. South of 26th is 70. The reason I mention that, the part of the focus of this was to determine if Areas One, Two, and Three were accurate, let's say, if that's the right word, or... To me, the, some of these areas, particularly part of Number Four area, the old Number Four, which now you're labeling N2, wraps around underneath and goes directly next to campus, and you're not changing the designation there. And then as you leave the campus, College Olive Walnut is the scope of Area Three, you have Iowa and Tremont that have a pretty high density of renters. It's kind of like the old College Hill overlay, if you still want to call it that, I guess. You're advising not to use it anymore, but it would seem to me that there should be a 3.5 in here to show major density, which would be three, even coming down to 28th, 29th Street, it's 100% rentals. And then when you go from the backside of Walnut Housing, Iowa Tremont, you have the 70%, 77% areas, and then as you go into the upper northeast part of Area Four, up towards 12th Street, that's predominantly single-family homes. So to characterize what you're now calling N2, to be that entire, entire area around NX1, doesn't seem quite right. There should be a NX1-1 or something.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. I will say that as, as a zoning code writer, and I, I do work on master plans occasionally, but I am usually writing the zoning recommendations of the master plans, our job is to not necessarily revisit the planning work that has been done, or revise the planning work that has been done. And while I totally saw that when I was driving around and understand what you're, what you're getting at, from the listening sessions, the neighbors, I believe, believe, believe that they can reinforce that area of the neighborhood, what you're talking about, kind of around Cerley Park, and make it single-family again.
Sure.
Or single and two-family, which is what the current zoning allows it to be.
Sure.
And so what we're trying to do is kind of maintain that there. The area to the south, I actually thought was part of that, Area Three initially, when I was first driving around, but again, I'm, this is the plan, this is from the plan. This map is from the plan. And one of the things that the limits of this map does really well, I think that the current zoning doesn't do well, is it grabs both sides of the street along Walnut. The current zoning goes down the middle of the street, which is pretty inappropriate, and we wouldn't do that today. So it does kind of grab a little bit more, but I think, again, the idea is to intensify this sort of small area in order to reinforce that to the, to the east.
If you look at another map that includes the university functioning buildings where the student population actually takes classes, you'll see that there's a couple significant buildings south of university that would be directly across from that area, south of Area Three, and that is where you see 100% rentals. And that, to me, should be a focus of Area Three or 3.5. I understand Cerley Park wants to be protected, that's understood. Many people would speak to that, especially on council. But to characterize the entire N2, or the Number Four, as they show it here, as the same, that it needs to be broken up in maybe three areas. Cerley Park area, as you stated, historic homes and single-family. South of that, you're getting in 100% rentals. North of that, you're getting much less rentals, so...
Okay.
Because the code that's going to be written is going to say that N2 is going to be all characterized one way, and then they're going to try to say we want to stabilize it, and one of the things on the books right now is if you sell a rental property at the point of sale, you can lose the use of a bedroom. And that's totally inappropriate for some of these areas that are directly adjacent to campus and some of the campus buildings.
Okay.
So...
Okay.
That's, that's a area of deficiency, if you want to call it that, in that, particularly when it says, the verbiage says you want to intensify, concentrate, intensify student housing next to campus. Well, adjacent is pretty much next and near.
I see what you're saying. So part of the beauty of using the building types is that what we can also do is that that area could use a different mix of building types, if we didn't want it to go as intensive as the current areas Three and, Two and Three go. So I think that that actually might work really well, and we'll just kind of keep that in the back of our minds and make sure that we're providing the tools to maybe readdress that.
That's why I said 3.5, or...
Yeah, yeah.
N2-2, or whatever you want.
Yeah, yeah, I can see that.
Or NX1, I don't know how you get these numbers.
Yeah. Well, I use N for neighborhood to sort of make it the shift from R residential, because I think neighborhood's friendly.
Okay, N2 to, okay.
And then NX is neighborhood mix, so it's meant to be, you know, that's the...
Yeah, because I know you, you changed the boundaries potentially of Area Seven, but didn't discuss anything on Area Three. Well, you did a little bit in some of the colors here, but I just thought to point out the distinction in these neighborhoods. Because Cerley Park, I understand totally, I've heard that for years. I've lived in and have been in many of these buildings in my college career many years ago, so I'm very well acquainted with these properties, all through this whole area.
Okay, that's good.
Thanks, Counselor. Open for other questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Hi, I live in N2.
Okay.
I, I'm so excited about this. I think this is great, and I appreciate all of the work that you've done. I, I am looking at this map, and I think that right now, it definitely looks good. I would say for me, my biggest concern, which you address... I would say, for me, my biggest concern, which you addressed, would be the garage situation. If I never saw another garage, I'd be so happy. So I think that'll be really good to focus on, and also, just helping people have some direction for what we would like to see, I think, would be really helpful, because, like you mentioned, a lot of those people are interested in making some changes and just making that easier, and encouraging people to do it. So I'm really excited. I don't have any questions, just wanted to say thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Questions, comments, concerns?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
So when this was discussed, thanks, Leslie, by the way, it was really interesting when I read through it this past week, a lot of great information and insight, you can tell you put into this. I follow what Daryl is saying. We talked about this three years ago, maybe?
Three, four?
Of adding, particularly, I work in the Applied Engineering Building, which is on the south end of University Avenue, so I see these rentals that Daryl's talking about just about every day. So that's one thing. But the chicken and the egg thing about, how do we get more businesses? How do we get more restaurants? Well, first, we got to get the housing piece done. It was interesting, you being able to sit down with property owners, that was something I hadn't, I think I saw a house I used to own in one of the things in here, that, I don't think I sold it to Daryl, but if it had been up at the time. The property owners not having enough space to really build these buildings that would be great to have up there, did they have any conversation that you picked up between them going, hey, what if we did something together? Or is that something we can...
They did, they did. Actually, I had two sessions, and they kind of overlapped. The gentleman for the second session actually showed up early and then thought he was going to get away with not doing his session, but I made him stay. But yes, they did, they did talk a little bit about that, because they were sort of pointing out on the map who owned what. So I do think that that's, there's maybe some potential there, but I think that we need to write the code to allow either thing to happen. Because even in Area 2, to the west of the hill, there's quite a mix of lot sizes there. I don't know if some of them had been aggregated before and something built, but there's quite a mix, and I think we need to make sure that we're allowing for, you know, different things to happen in those different sized lots, whether or not they aggregate them after, you know, the code is written or not. Yeah.
Yeah, parking's been a tough one for a long time. I can remember coming to meetings when Dave Whelan was on council. Ron, when would that have been? Couple of days ago?
Six years ago.
Six years ago, just about.
And, you know, discussing, well, how would the residents respond to having no parking, just a drop-off zone? And Isaac can maybe talk to this from the you and I student perspective. You don't have a place for a car. Can we rent a spot by the Unidome, in the Unidome parking lot? You know, come up with some, created some solutions, and like you say, we get that part, then, you know, back when there was an actual grocery store on the hill. It's great that there's at least a convenience store, but the grocery store is still there, it's just behind the convenience store. And to build that back up, got a lot of, lot of work ahead of us. This is a great piece to get passed. Thank you.
I will say, I appreciate the holistic look at the parking. I know reading through it, it did mention specifically that college students admit they do have cars, because right now, it's required, you need one. So just being realistic with where we're at, but realizing we're trying to move to, how do we allow more people to live in a space that doesn't have a lot of space? And putting realistic tools in place that maybe help us work toward that, and protect the neighborhoods. I think that's something we've heard a lot from, is people concerned that the students are able to park there for free, instead of paying for a parking pass. So finding ways to protect the neighborhood parking and enable us to use that district is really appreciated.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep. Leslie, thank you for the presentation. I had a couple of questions for you. One, I wanted to double-check. One of my intentions would be to clean up the disparity or confusion between the overlay and the zoning. You alluded to some properties not fitting the required lot size and being unable to redevelop. How do you propose that we fix that in this new code? What can we do to make sure that the properties that already exist can continue to exist in that fashion, refurbished, as that's predominant need from this council? Can you answer that one first? How do we fix that?
Yeah, absolutely. We just set the minimum lot size to what's actually there. This is, this is common across the country. I mean, I, unfortunately, most GIS systems, most parcel layers in GIS don't have lot width on them. They just, so I end up having to kind of measure all of them, but that will be sort of part of our process. I think within areas 2 and 3, the R3 and the R4 areas, I think it makes good sense to just sort of model it off of the buildings that exist there. What I refer to in the neighborhoods is that some of the minimum lot sizes, some of the lot sizes in the neighborhoods are actually quite a bit smaller than what is in R1 or R2. And I hesitate to make those kinds of statements, because, you know, these are people's times, and you want to do some studying further. And so, I'll be looking at those and kind of measuring them, and seeing how many are smaller and non-conforming. Really, having a non-conforming house, if you're not going to do anything with it, is okay, for your lot to be non-conforming, and, you know, that exists in a lot of places. But in this particular case, in areas 2 and 3, where they want to redevelop and they can't, because they want to maybe tear down and rebuild, the lots do need to be conforming, so. I hope I answered my question.
Yeah, that does answer my question. I think that's one of our big focuses. My second question would be just with the timeline, going within November through January. I think last time, we had discussions around some zoning changes during an election cycle, there was some concern. So I'd like to just see, is that intentional to overlap to the next potential body, or is there some shrink available that we could push it into this year? Or is that timeline just pretty standard?
Well, I will say, I don't know why it happens this way, but we seem to get to the end of the process at the end of the year, and November and December is not a very good time to be doing outreach or hearing meetings. And so, that's probably why it extends into January, and January people are more willing. But, but we can, we can talk about the timeline.
And I think we can answer that, too, but we've talked about this on the staff side, too. Go ahead, Ron. You seem like you're leaning forward.
Well, it is also a little bit instruction from staff, that what we heard from this body, and whether it was this council or the previous council, about shoving stuff through at the end of an election year. And so, what we want to do is make sure that the newly-elected council seated after January would be the ones voting on it.
Because we kind of have that, we don't want to feel like it was a push-through, and don't want it to become a political football, and figured it might be better to let it go through till next year.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Great presentation, thank you. I'd be really curious, just anecdotally from what you've seen, and maybe you can't answer this question. Do you have a sense of what percentage of lots you think now are non-conforming in
this area?
I, I don't. I would say, at least in the core area, in areas 2 and 3, it's maybe a third.
It's actually a little over than I would have thought. I think, I would love to see a way for us to remedy that situation for them, so they actually are able to reinvest and revitalize these properties. I think that's a wonderful call-out. The parking options, I think it's a pain point for everybody on this council, no matter what area, town you want to talk about. So, options to evaluate that is great, especially thinking about the catchment area that you and I really kind of tries to draw their students from. The likelihood that a student is not going to have a car in this area is slim to none. So finding somewhere for them to park, absolutely very important, but I don't necessarily know that it has to be tied to the individual properties. I think that's a great call-out. And then, there was a reference to the grocery store, and I know that was in your report as well on the hill, so I think that's also an amenity that's badly needed in that area, among others, but overall, very interesting. And I am glad to hear that we're looking at not doing this right before whatever Monday in November that is, because that would not be real appetizing, I don't think, for anyone. So, thank you, good job.
Our election's Tuesday.
Sure. I don't know, I'm not up this year.
Not that it's an election year or anything.
Thank you, Counselor. Any thoughts, conversations, Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I just want to say, you know, thank you, Leslie. Really excited about this project. Grocery store was something that we brought up in our meeting, I think at the beginning of this year, so, you know, I'm excited that that's part of the project, too. I'm excited to see this go forward, and the student government definitely is excited to see this project go forward as well.
Thank you, Isaac. Any other?
I don't feel like I need to say anything, because I feel like I'm just repeating myself. I love it. I mean, I, to be honest, like, I'm so excited for this presentation and the next presentation. Makes me excited, so, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, go ahead.
Aaron's going to be last, I know, he always waits till last.
You can go, Daryl.
Are you sure you go, and then, because that's the attorney trick, to be the last?
It's no trick, Daryl.
Oh, they don't call it tricks in the attorney profession, okay. Strategies, okay. I guess, I said this once, a couple, three years ago, the people we're dealing with, the population we're dealing with, predominantly are students. They're in town to go to college and study and learn. And that kind of lends me to what my comments were earlier about 3.5, or break up number 4 into Cerley Park area and so on. The core area, to me, is where the students live, and the College Hill happens to be a byproduct of that. I know some people may not think of it that way. If you didn't have the university, you obviously wouldn't have the College Hill. So that's something that I think staff and yourself should look at and think about. The grocery store item, that's going to be really tough, because we've had a group trying to get one downtown, where there's even more commercial, more people. You know, QuickTrip 2.0, I don't know, add a grocery store onto QuickTrip? Different kinds of milk, I don't know. You know, it's like, that's what it is. I mean, it's probably a different style of QuickTrip than many others are, you know? They cater to the student appetite, so, just some comments there. And I did pull up some numbers from the previous visioning. I think they said like 4% of the population doesn't have cars, and they're predominantly in the dorms. My experience as a landlord for many decades is that a student may come without a car, but sooner or later, the parents buy them a car. Unless they're an international student. Those, they won't, but you probably heard this, it's kind of common to get around to... I've seen some conflicts with tenants, when one or two doesn't have a car, then the other two have to be their chauffeur, and that lasts until about winter hits, and then it's like, time to get a car.
That's the relationship.
Anyway, just some observations of...
Thanks, Counselor. You don't have to talk.
You know what, I know, I just feel like I should chime in really quick and say thank you, by the way. Thank you. What excites me about this is it kind of emphasized the need for this relook and the purpose of the plan and that. There's some pent-up demand and a need for a change in direction in the type of development that may be encouraged on the hill, that will also help, as you say, stabilize the surrounding neighborhoods that I kind of knew was there, but didn't realize was there, to the extent that you were relaying tonight. And so, I love the idea. It is just a draft, right? And as I understand it, there can be, I think your words were, push-pull on some of the boundaries, just kind of what fits better, and so I am in favor of moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions, comments? Other than, we'll entertain a motion to want to essentially give direction to staff and the consultant to move forward with the, beginning the more detailed work of putting together zoning proposals and parking recommendations and all the coordinating. Motion accepted, any further discussion?
Just a quick question. Leslie, how long will you be involved with this, all the way through to the end?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't go anywhere.
Okay.
I'm working on a code that's five years old.
You need a rental while you're here?
I have to state that you cannot try to promote personal business.
Oh, I didn't say.
Just kidding.
Gil has some vacancies there.
No, I'm...
Selling your rental wasn't in your conflict of interest.
I'm out.
All right, any other discussion from council? And any discussion or questions from the public tonight? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Leslie. A quick question for the group, would anyone like a quick five-minute break, five-minute break before we go? Are we good, keep going? All right. All those will move to item number 2, then, Major Thoroughfare Plan and Connectivity Standards, which, again, we have Karen Howard. Some background on this, we're not looking for a motion or anything tonight. This is just to get this initially in front of everybody for feedback and thoughts. Has gone through the P&amp;Z process. The next thing you would see is on, not tonight's council meeting, but on the first one in April, we would be setting the public hearing for the second meeting in April, to be where we actually consider the first reading on the public hearing on this item. So more just for information tonight, get this in front of everybody, and start getting everybody's thoughts on it. So.
Okay.
All yours, Karen.
Good evening again. Part 2. This is a presentation of the Major Thoroughfare Plan. We've been working on this for a couple of years. It's a staff, we've worked on it internally on staff, and I want to give a shout-out to Matt Tolan and J.D. Adadoria, who have done a lot of the background research on this, a lot of work, looking at maps and what other communities have been doing, what's best practice, looking at state standards for engineering. So a lot of background work went into this effort, and we presented that background work back in August to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And that was supposed to be a public presentation of the goals of the project, which are twofold, to update the Major Thoroughfare Plan that a lot of people don't know that we actually have in our code, because it is so outdated, it's from the 1980s. So obviously, the city's grown quite a bit since then, and so, it's really not useful right now. So we need to update that map, and then update the definitions and regulations in that chapter of the city code. And then also, we started looking at, that's, those are the major thoroughfares, those are the collector streets and the arterial streets in the community, but then also looking at the smaller streets, the local streets, and some of the connectivity issues that we've experienced in the last few years, we've heard complaints from the community about. And so, really tying all those pieces together by improving our subdivision code. So just, again, a project overview here. We looked at some of the problems and potential solutions that were highlighted in the staff presentation in August 28th, we presented to the public there. We, after that, we did some outreach to the Bike and Ped Commission to talk about the project. We notified the Home Builders Association and CFEDC that we were giving that presentation, and then we prepared and created a project webpage that had that presentation on it. In that presentation, we not only highlighted the problems they were seeing in the community, but also then, our recommended approaches to move forward. So that's been out there in the public for a review since August. And then, we came back to the Planning and Zoning Commission with actual code language at the end of last year and early in January, had public meetings at the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then commissioned and recommended approval of these zoning code, or not zoning code, code amendments to subdivision in Chapter 19. So just to back up a minute and talk really about the benefits of our Major Thoroughfare Plan. If we have an updated plan in the code, it can be very useful for us, for a lot of different reasons. They identify the major thoroughfares, which means those arterial streets, the major streets that go through the community, and our collector streets that collect the traffic from our local streets and funnel it to our arterial streets. So those are what we call our critical connections in the community. They create efficient traffic circulation and help traffic move around the city. It's really the guiding document also for our capital improvements planning and for new subdivisions. It's the basis often for requests for federal and state infrastructure grants. We coordinate with Intercog, with our arterial street maps. It also helps reduce debate about location and the type of the major roadways as the city expands. So if we have this map in place and a subdivision comes in, we kind of know, okay, there needs to be a collector connection here. It's shown on this map, so it helps us to have those conversations with the developer. And then also, it helps to ensure consistency in our development review over time. I think a lot of the developers are basically saying, just tell us what the rules are. We want to know what those objective standards are, what our plan says, so they can easily move forward without having to design and redesign. So in Chapter 19, we have updated, proposed updates to the definitions, the standards for access to arterial streets. Again, we've updated the map, and that's incorporated into that by reference. The standards for access to arterial streets, again, we've updated the map and that's incorporated into that by reference. And then that map shows the spacing of collector streets being approximately quarter, quarter-mile spacing, which is consistent with the statewide urban design specifications manual, also with the Federal Highway Administration guidance. So Matt Tolan did a lot and J.D. did a lot, looking at the map, seeing where those cross streams, looking at what was appropriate, really kind of diving into the details of each part of the city to create that map. And just so everybody understands, this is a map that doesn't exactly, exactly say where the alignment's going to be. We're not trying to go through somebody's house or something like that. So when it comes down to some, a proposed development, we would take a look at the map to generally show, oh, there's a collector street shown approximately here. And then we'll work with the developer to, to achieve that. So then, the, the next piece of this project was really to look then further down to say, at our local street level, how do we create connected street patterns so that people can get around our local neighborhoods and get to the destinations they want to get to? So if you have a connected street pattern, there's a lot of benefits to that. It provides multiple routes to neighborhood destinations such as schools, parks, and shopping. It allows really for the efficient growth of the city, and that's something really important that I'll touch on later. It helps to reduce walking and biking distances, so it makes it easier for kids, for example, to walk to school easily. And then parents don't have to drive them every single day. So, and, and also improves the safety for, for walkers and bicyclists. It reduces the commute times. And, you know, when people are in a hurry, they have a long-distance drive, they tend to speed. We've seen complaints about, you know, when we talk about traffic calming, that sort of thing, speeding through the neighborhoods, driver frustration. We hear those things and sometimes it's a very function of our disconnected pattern of streets. It also helps to reduce emergency response times if we have connected streets. It provides those efficient routes for extension of utilities and services. That's where we also connect all those utilities, is along our roadways, along our right-of-way. And also then, an efficient pattern, pattern for providing services in the community like refuse pickup and for snow clearing. It also helps to reduce traffic congestion in neighborhoods and along the major streets by helping to distribute the traffic more evenly throughout the community. If you think about the older parts of town where we have the smaller blocks, you don't hear a lot of traffic concerns about traffic circulation. You don't hear concerns about traffic congestion or speeding because you have a regular interval of street intersections. So people are having to pay attention, they're having to slow down a little bit. It's when you get into these long stretches of street where people can really pick up speed and there's not street intersections at a regular interval, that you get some of those complaints that we hear. And then finally, really to provide clear standards in our, our codes, just like in the last project. The more that we can create clear and objective standards in our ordinances, the easier it is for developers to understand what it is we want and what we're expecting, so that the process goes much smoother when we're reviewing subdivisions and their approvals get, gets sales through the process a lot easier. And then also, it's the fairness issue, because we hear sometimes, well, how come you didn't make that guy over there do this? And it helps, you know, when you, when you're spreading out your development over decades, a lot of times we don't have an answer about why somebody else didn't have to do it. And our answer typically is, we're trying to do better. We're trying to get better. But the, one of the ways we can get better and have more consistent reviews is to have standards on the books. So once again, we do hear some complaints received about traffic congestion, speeding, lack of direct safe routes to school. And a lot of those can be traced back to a lack of adequately connected streets. In fact, and I, I know you already know this, concern about traffic congestion and safety is one of the top reasons cited by the public for opposing new development, so. There was some, we did quite a bit of review of this, of some of the issues that we saw in our neighborhoods. And I want to emphasize that we have some beautiful neighborhoods in Cedar Falls. And this is not meant, meant to disparage any particular neighborhood or anything, because there's some beautiful homes and neighborhoods, people love their neighborhoods. But just merely to point out some of the issues that people are experiencing are... And so when you have really long blocks and a lot of cul-de-sacs, it makes it harder to walk and bike in the neighborhood and to get to neighborhood destinations. This is the Lexington Heights, Quail Ridge neighborhoods, north of the new high school, north of... And you can see Robinson Dresser there, right along 12th Street. So if you think about living on that block that's really long there, it's over 2,000 feet long, and so it's like a mile to walk around that block. But if you think about living there and say you want to drive your kids to school, or your kids are driving themselves to school, you have to go south, and then you have to go north, and then you have to go south again, and then, you know, so it's a very long circuitous route to get there. And then if you think about any kids wanting to bike, you know, I guess our high school students like to drive their own cars. But, but if there are students that like to bike, our kids walking, people want to walk over to Robinson Dresser, for example, for an event, it's just harder to get there when you have a lot of cul-de-sacs in the area. And then the other point is, it's difficult to develop the adjacent land. So when you are not thinking, a lot of developers are just thinking about their own piece of ground, not thinking about the future of the land next to them. And if you don't provide any street stubs or not enough street stubs to the adjacent land, it's very difficult. And so when you talk about increased cost, that, you have to think about the increased cost of not developing land that we have available in our city limits. Here's another example of, of an area of town, if you think about it. There is, you can see there's no north-south through streets for over a mile. This is along First Street here. You can see Winding Ridge there, Wyndham, Windwood Drive area, the Thunder Ridge area. Really difficult to get north and south, and so we've had some real connectivity issues there. You can see that Windwood Drive, for example, see that land that's just to the east of that? Right now, we have somebody that would like to develop that piece of ground, but there were no street stubs provided to it. So it's going to be very difficult and very expensive for them to do that. So if we talk about the kind of hidden costs of not connecting our streets, now there may be an additional cost to providing more street connections, but there's also all these other costs that will be preventing from occurring. So here's the, the Aldrich Elementary School area, and I know a lot of you, we've heard about the concentration of traffic on Eric Road and the complaints from people that live there. A lot of that's because we haven't completed our critical street connections yet, Edwards Drive, Ashworth. We're, we're working on that right now, and those, when those are complete, that's going to be helpful to the folks that live on Eric Drive. But even so, even after it's completely built out, there's really, with the cul-de-sacs here, with the lack of connections between neighborhoods, even at full-built-out, walking or biking to school is going to remain difficult for many households. And I want to show you just an example of that, which is circled in the number one here, and we'll close, do a close-up of that. And I know probably many of you were on council when we had the, the people that live in that purple lot there and some of their neighbors got together. They can see the elementary school from their backyard, but they can't walk there. And so they made a makeshift bridge across the drainage way there. And, and then of course, we decided that was kind of dangerous, so we had them remove it. But right now, it's a mile for their kids to walk to school when they can see the school from their backyard. So even after, even after build-out of the streets that are, are, are planned here, it's still going to be a half-mile walk. Now, if the streets had have been connected, as you can see on the right here, it would have been much easier to just stub those streets to the property boundary, continue those streets, and allowed a, a projection of that street also to Panther West, which is going to be under construction soon. So a lot more connectivity with small street stubs, and as we've shown here in the picture, no lots were locked, would have been lost. Because the triangular shape lots that occur when you have a curved street are a little more inefficient. And so when you have a straight street that connects to the neighborhoods, you can achieve usually the same number of lots. And occasionally, more lots. Again, here another example focusing on this idea of street stubs so, to allow the adjacent properties to develop. This is the Autumn Ridge neighborhood. And there's really very few street stubs to the adjacent properties. And this is another case where every quarter-mile, farmers can sell their land on a quarter-quarter section. That's a quarter-mile on, on each edge. And so a farmer comes in, they have some property for sale, a developer wants to buy that. And they can sell it off in those quarter-quarter sections without subdividing, they can sell off parcels that way. Well, if there's not at least two street connections to that, in that quarter-mile, we had somebody come in, they wanted to develop, a farmer wanted to sell their land. They, we told them, you're only going to be able to build 30 houses here because there's only one means of access. So they said, well, that's not going to pencil for me, I, we can't make that work. So this is a, just one example of some of the issues that we've come across. One of the things we did is we looked at what other commu-, Iowa communities are doing. Communities across the country are, you know, kind of examining this issue for the last 10 or 20 years, trying to pull back from, you know, development that's laden with cul-de-sacs and disconnected streets. So there's quite a few cities in Iowa that have adopted. Some, some of these have been on the books for 20 years. A lot of, most of these have been on the books for at least 10 years. So Cedar Rapids, Ames, Iowa City, City of Pella, Mason City, Des Moines, all have maximum block length standards. And maximum perimeter block length standards, so we kind of looked at all those. And the reason those standards could be in the codes, easy to measure. And then we can say, okay, what's, what's generally, how often should we have a, a street intersection? How should we connect those streets? And adopting block length standards is one of those key pieces. You can see here that we do already have a maximum cul-de-sac length of 600 feet. So there are going to be situations where cul-de-sacs are appropriate. And, you know, if you're up against a nat-, natural area, a stream corridor, you can't connect your street for various reasons, cul-de-sacs may still be appropriate. And then, looking at the right-of-way width, I'll get into that in just a moment. So these are the, the proposed street connectivity standards that we have incorporated into a draft for the subdivision code with block lengths arranging between 200, 200 and 800 feet, because there's always a short side of the block and a long side of the block, with a majority of the blocks in the 300 to 600-foot range. This aligns with our fire code and the 600 feet matches our current maximum cul-de-sac length. And it kind of aligns with what other communities are doing as well. The maximum perimeter block length, which is the distance around the block, then, to make sure we're connecting all the way around, we've proposed 2,200 feet. And that would mean you could have a block that had 800 feet on a side and then 300 feet on the short side, and you'd be able to then meet that standard. And then at least two streets, two connections per quarter-mile along the edges of subdivisions. Allowing flexibility for natural barriers such as stream corridors and floodplain, barriers causing existing development, arterial streets or large institutional uses, we are going to have those situations where the blocks are going to need to be longer. And so we've built all that flexibility into the rules that we've drafted. And then for those long blocks, if we need to have a long block, say along a stream corridor, maybe we have a trail that we've got along the stream and we want to connect, provide a pedestrian connection to that trail. So the code includes a requirement for through-block sidewalks in places where it's appropriate. And then with the collector streets, intersection spacing about a quarter-mile. And that's going to align with the major thoroughfare map and allow with the statewide urban design standards. And then, as I said, I really want to emphasize this because I think, I didn't want to have people confused about this, is obviously when you're developing land, every piece of ground is different. And so there are going to be natural barriers, there's going to be a school, there's going to be a big park, there's going to be a ravine. So obviously, we're going to have to have flexibility built into this to work with the developers. So we've got a lot of exceptions to the rules where if somebody has one of these situations, existing development prevents a connection, large lot development, you know, we have industrial parks, we've got commercial areas and stuff that would need longer blocks. Along our arterial streets, we don't want necessarily connection so often along arterial streets. So there might be situations there where a cul-de-sac would be appropriate, for example. And of course, along our highway, highways as well. And then to accommodate the large neighborhood facilities and institutions such as schools and churches, parks, regional stormwater facilities. So along those boundaries, obviously, we're going to need to make exceptions. So some additional changes to the subdivision code you see in the draft that I put in your packet. Updated definitions of arterial and collector streets to match what we did in chapter 19. Updated right-of-way widths. Right now, in the subdivision code, we have an 80-foot right-of-way for collector streets, but we really haven't done that in practice. Only when we've had like a median or something, we felt that 80 feet, we didn't need to take that much land out of development. So we would like to switch it back to 66 feet for collector streets to be more consistent with our current practice. And then for the local streets, we found that those are a little bit too tight, so we'd like to also increase that to 66. That'll keep everything fairly consistent and will allow enough space for the utilities that run along the right-of-way for sidewalks, street trees, and also our public works would appreciate if we had a little more space for snow storage in the wintertime. And then we added a requirement for temporary construction roads if it's needed to reduce the impact to existing neighborhoods, so we can kind of direct construction traffic on a, an appropriate route rather than through the neighborhood. And then in general, we've tried to eliminate vague language in the code that's, you know, shoulds and, and we made them shalls instead of shoulds. So I'm not going to go through these diagrams, but they were in your packet for you to look at, how we would put some illustrations in our code to really help people to understand how these standards will be applied, how we would measure those. How we would measure perimeter block length, for example. You know, this idea of the through-block connection, how you would, you might be appropriate places for those. And then again, stubbing the streets to the property boundary instead of just turning the corner. And then to encourage street access to, to parks and public schools, that sort of institutional uses. We've, we've put a standard that you don't have to count the street frontage for those. It gives an incentive for providing enough street frontage to act, for people to access those important uses in the community. And so we went through all this at the Planning and Zoning Commission several times, we had public hearings. And so the Planning and Zoning Commission, on a vote of eight to one, recommended approval of the proposed code amendments. So the next steps we would recommend is setting a public hearing date on, on April 7th and having the public hearing on April 21st. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Karen?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Nope.
Ms. Howard, I would love to hear, I just was, wanted to understand on the cul-de-sac length being 600 foot, where there's a block around it, if the cul-de-sac is necessary, what would that block be around it? If that's limited to 600 feet, how do we accommodate a cul-de-sac within two other local streets?
That's a really good question. If it's appropriate, that would be the place where we look to those exceptions. So for their, they're probably, their perimeter block length is going to be too long, as you noted. So that's where, you know, if we've decided, hey, you're up against a stream corridor here, obviously, you're not going to be able to meet the block length standard. You're also not going to be able to meet the perimeter block length standard. But maybe it's appropriate for you to put a through-block pedestrian connection, for example. So we would look at those kinds of things when we're reviewing the subdivisions.
Gotcha. So the block would be three streets on one side, where the cul-de-sac being one of those streets?
Right.
That would be the defined block, not the cul-de-sac becomes a block, correct?
Right, it becomes, you know, yeah, we would measure, yeah.
Okay, that makes sense. I just wanted to clarify that part. Lots of reading to do on this yet. Busy last week, but we will. Thank you. Any questions, discussions from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Can you, Karen, thanks for the presentation. Can you back up to a slide you had showing a bike trail coming through instead of a street? Is that my interpretation of what you were getting there?
Right. Yeah, so this is just an illustration where we've got a stream corridor and obviously, people aren't going to cross the street corridor every 600 feet or 800 feet. There might be a longer stretch and the city would help determine where are the appropriate places to cross the stream corridor. And usually, there's a floodplain associated with it. So we're going to have some longer blocks along our stream corridors. In this case, though, if there is a public trail there, people are going to need to get access to it. And it's actually, it becomes an amenity in the neighborhood, and so usually the developers are going to want to give their, the people that are buying the houses, access to that. are going to want to give their, the people that are buying the houses, access to that trail system. So that's what that's there for.
So I couldn't find it, but in my travels for the last couple of years, I ran across a subdivision in Cheyenne, Wyoming, that won awards, and it had a lot of meandering streets. They weren't squared off like we're showing here, and they had bike trails, almost as prominent as a street, that we could incorporate into these and not have as many cross streets, I'll call them. And I guess Quail Ridge would be an example, which, back in the day, if they would have done that between the two long streets, whatever they're called, I can't read them, Quail Ridge Drive and Ridge or something, but put in one of these bike sidewalks, bike streets, you might say, that would alleviate what you mentioned about the long trek to school. Quail Ridge has got issues with streams nearby and then land ownership, of course. They didn't stub it to the south, but I'm concerned that we don't have enough flexibility in here, to be honest with you, that we're going to like hold it to the 2,200 around the perimeter, when some places you could put 2,600 here and 800 here and, you know, make it kind of a patchwork and make it a unique neighborhood. I've not heard concerns from Quail Ridge about accessibility. Everybody's got to go to 12th Street, and everything goes up to 12th Street. Maybe now, I don't know, if they're trying to cross to the school or something, but I want to see enough flexibility in this thing, so that it doesn't become so rigid to say, you're at 2,200. It's not a cul-de-sac, like Councilor Gannfield said, but yet, it makes sense to the way the lay of the land is here, that we could do 2,600 for a couple of areas and then go to the 800s around it or whatever we decide. I think that's important, and not just be guided by streams and creeks and wetlands and that sort of thing. To have some variability where we can have some really long blocks, but then use the bike trail through it. I think that's important, because we emphasize walking and biking. Every other street could be a bike street, let's call it, bike trail. And then you could extend the 2,200 to maybe 4,400, just thinking, because Quail Ridge is an example of that where, I don't know that there's concerns there, but I could be wrong. So I think it's important to get some flexibility in this, because we don't know that everything's going to fit real nice into 800, perimeter 2,200. So, I work with numbers too much, I'm sorry.
So we did look a lot of, a lot of numbers in a lot of different blocks and a lot of different communities. I also want to emphasize that, you know, we got this question asked at P&amp;Z as well, is, you know, our illustrations are all rectangular, because that's how it's easy to draw it. But obviously, you could do a curvilinear pattern and still meet the block length standards.
May I add on to that, Mr. Mayor? Excuse me. Knowing what was going to be on the, on the presentation coming up, and I wasn't planning on zoning to watch this initially, I was flying into Charlotte, North Carolina, and I looked down and I saw a whole thousands of acres of subdivisions being developed, and none of them were straight. And granted, they were dealing with water features and water concerns, but I snapped a bunch of photos, and I was going to get those, and I couldn't find the Cheyenne, Wyoming one, but I'll get those to you, Mr. Mayor. It was really, you know, they're all brand new. You could tell because there's no trees. Or they were like this big. So, and I know you said, everything looks square because it's easy to show that, but I want to see flexibility to make unique neighborhoods.
Oh, for sure.
I want to emphasize that, because it implies here, everything is pretty much a grid.
Yeah, and it's not meant to do that. We have to, these diagrams are just meant to show how you would measure something. So rather than describing words how you would measure something, you know, illustration is worth a thousand words. So, you know, there's going to be, obviously, with hilly land and stream corridors, a lot of times, it makes sense to follow the roads along that pattern. So it's not meant to imply that you can't have curvilinear streets.
And it's, it's difficult to take a neighborhood like Quail Ridge, which I think started to be developed in the 90s, as I remember it in college days, that there was no, I mean, you don't have any exit to the south, and whether there was anything close by to exit to, but you don't have to stub, I should say. You don't have to stub. So, anyway.
Thanks, Councilor. I'm Council.
Just wanted to double check on the draft, major thoroughfare plan. The development to the west of town does look pretty squared off. How much deviation is there allowed for those future planned collector streets in the dashboard on that map? I mean, they're pretty squared up now, but we can adjust to that as needed as things develop out?
Those aren't intended to be exact alignments. What we tried to use is that QQ grid, the quarter-quarter mile grid, as a pattern to show kind of generally how, where those would be needed. So they're spaced about approximately a quarter mile apart. But yes, obviously, we have a lot of collector streets that are curvy.
Sure. And then for those deviations, what's that process look like? For the review of a proposed plan, if we were going to provide some exceptions around cul-de-sacs or around where the connector streets might reroute or collector streets might reroute, what does that exception process look like?
We would just incorporate it right into the subdivision review, and then it would be in the staff report. We would, we'd highlight, okay, does it meet the street connectivity standards? This is where they varied from it, these are the reasons why we think it's appropriate. And so it would be the same as it is now. So I don't anticipate this as a, an extra step. This is all just being used as rules that we would use, then, we don't have any rules right now. So the idea is to have some rules in the code to help guide the developer, and then we'll use those rules and review the subdivisions with them, and then it'll just be in the same process we have now.
This is something I've seen digging into a lot of other communities, their zoning and how they use, like their adjustment with staff and a bunch of things. And I've noticed since our code is older, we have no flexibility built in. There's no specific areas that say, here's a standard, but here's a minor design review that's allowed, or a major one that can be reviewed. So I think long-term, that's why we're seeing more of this in here, is trying to be objective, but build more of the flexibility in. I think that's where we hear a lot of the, people don't like that staff's being subjective, but then they don't like when there's no flexibility at all in the objectivity of the code. So I think we're trying to do more to be intentional about, okay, how do we build in the use cases, so that we can be more intentional about allowing it, without it feeling like we're just subjectively giving approvals here and there?
A letter of the law versus spirit of law. Right, Aaron? Is there such a thing?
I'll go with that, yeah.
One of those tricky lawyer things.
I will say, I do appreciate staff. I know after reviewing them, we saw a lot of the other standards, like cities of 600, and we did discuss and, with some back and forth, and decided to try and build a little more flexibility with ours. That's why we had the allowed-for-update 100, still trying to maybe keep that, near that 600 for some of them, but then allowing the bigger block amount compared to what we saw in some of the other standards, just not wanting the default to saying, here's what it is, because everyone else is doing it, but kind of looking at what we felt was something this group would look at supporting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Just wanted to say thank you, Karen. Great presentation, and thanks to JD and Matt for all of your hard work. I didn't have time to make my square blocks rocks shirt, but, you know. I love the idea of the through-block sidewalk. I know there's some of those currently behind homes, and I think those get used a lot by kids, and again, that encouraging kids to walk and ride their bike, and then hopefully, we can build that into some of our adults as well, so that long-term, we're utilizing those things. I know I always had to walk to school, so I am hoping to encourage my kids to do that as well. So excited about this. I think it'll be good and excited to see more connected streets in the future. So thank you.
Was it uphills? Uphill, both ways?
Yeah, it was. And always when it was raining and snowing, at the same time.
Barefooted.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other thoughts feedback from Council?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, excuse me, Mr. Heath, I wonder, the 66-foot street width, coupled with some of the sentiments I hear about some of the less wide streets in the residential areas, was there some push towards restricting parking on one side with, I think, if it's less than 31 feet, we do only allow one-side parking? Do you see any problems with parking continuing on both sides of the street, or would there be a benefit to restricting one-sided parking in development in the future for your plowing and garbage pickup?
No, I don't see anything that would really be restrictive. A lot of times, if we're, if we get that 31-foot street, we're in good shape, if I'm understanding your question correctly.
Yeah, I think that covers it. I think the 66 includes all of the right-of-way, so allows for that. And I was just wondering if we can save some of that development land by allowing for smaller street widths, but if that's not necessary in those areas, then it's not something we need to fight for.
Yeah, for parking on both sides, I don't think I'd want to go any narrower.
Yeah. But if we did go in some development, for example, parking only on one side, you could get away with a narrower street and thus perhaps a variance from the 66-foot, I would assume.
Sure.
And if you're removing a lane of travel, you could probably reduce it to that 60-foot with a variance potentially.
If I can quick, Karen, do we typically, when we do like neighborhood development, know some streets do have the parking both sides, some is just one side? Does that affect how much right-of-way we ask for?
No, because that's not being determined at the time the subdivision is, is reviewed. We have a standard of a 31-foot wide street right now in the code. So a lot of the narrower streets in the community were developed a long time ago or under different rules. So, you know, it is something we could look at in the future, but we didn't tackle the street standards here.
Gotcha. I don't think trucks are getting any smaller, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add to that?
Yeah.
The, the right-of-way width not only accommodates a street, but all of the, the infrastructure that's within that right-of-way. So you start to get any narrower than that 60 or 66-foot, you start to get infrastructure that's, that's onto private property, so.
Mr. Mayor, along that lines to Karen and Mr. Gaines, if there is a place, as a developer's developing some land, that a 24-foot street would be appropriate, and then you add your sidewalks and your right-of-way, you don't need 66 feet, you could use, what would that be, seven feet less, 59. I mean, not every single street, I don't think, every single street should be mandated to be 31 feet, if it's appropriate, given a layout of something, where there may be homes on one side, let's say, and you don't have homes on both sides. Would that be appropriate? Have we, do we have flexibility to do that?
So right now, we did not tackle the street standards with this project. So that is certainly something that could be looked at, you know, the actual what happens between right-of-way lines, you know, with the street, what we need for the utilities and the infrastructure, street trees, you know, bike lanes, all that, way into, you know, how we would design those streets. So that's another, that's a big project and something worthy of discussion, but it wasn't included with this project.
If you have a funky acreage that, the lay of it, to ideally do it and get as many homes, you might have a one-sided street or, homes on one side of the street, potentially. I don't know if it's likely, but maybe. Would be nice to have that flexibility.
Just, we do have a standard in the code right now that says basically, the city could consider requests for narrower streets, but we haven't really had very many requested. So it is in the code, but it has to be approved by the city engineer and of course, P&amp;Z and Council as well. So there is that, a little bit of flexibility built into that, and we're not touching that provision in the subdivision code right now, but street standards are another topic of discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Mr. Gaines, was that what you were alluding to with your comment, was that we kind of have a minimum that we need for infrastructure? Do you have a number?
For right-of-way needs is, is, you know, you're looking at putting sanitary, water main, electric, storm sewer, gas, all of those underground. So that right-of-way corridor gets pretty tight pretty quick when you're talking about only 66-foot wide. Now, if you're talking about the street width in, in particular, Karen hit the nail on the head, is we have had some requests. I think one of the last ones that I remember is Green Creek Road off of, off of Green Hill, is, that's parking on one side, and I can't remember, I want to say it's 29 feet, but either 27 or 29. Add two, 29. So, so yeah, there has been times that we've, that the cities approved something smaller and, and looked at, you know, reducing the parking then as well.
So if you've got a spot where you're between two creeks, let's say, of some sort, or wetlands, you can squeeze in one row of homes instead of two and...
Absolutely.
That sounds like it's flexible. Okay, that's what I wanted to hear.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yeah, go ahead.
Karen, thank you. I very much enjoyed the preparation for this meeting, because I don't know, even though I'm not an engineer or a city planner, it's very interesting to me in the fact that, you know, to me, okay, I'm not a developer, but as a person who may be, any planning, to me, I love a good list of expectations. It makes it so much easier to be efficient in your own work when you know exactly what is expected. So I appreciate that. I do appreciate the flexibility and the thought that things maybe don't fit everywhere, so I appreciate that, because we all know, just in life, and if for sure, sitting in this position, that there is a need for flexibility for some folks. I certainly appreciate and don't want to have unnecessary barriers for developers, because in the end, that harms all of us. You know, it all trickles down. But I also appreciate, to balance that out, that we also look out for the needs of citizens and, and visitors and folks who are moving about the city. And so to me, this does that. And it's not just for the folks living there now, or maybe when those houses are built, it surely is for the future. And I love the example, although I don't love it for those folks, but the example that we, probably many of us remember, of the folks who live up by Aldridge, because I remember when we all got a bunch of emails, and, and I know, because my family members live in that neighborhood, that it is a thing, like, oh, we have to go out and around instead of what would have been obviously a much more efficient way. So to me, this builds for the future and helps tell, hopefully, a great story for Cedar Falls after we're all long gone. And yeah, I do love a square block. Like, when you're moving snow, not that I'm an expert on the moving snow, but the few times I rode in the snowplow, it's much different moving the snow in the urban core, my, what I call the urban core, and as opposed to when you go out, you know, in some of the new development, developments. And it's not anything, that's fine. I love those neighborhoods, they're beautiful. But you have to remember, we're all paying for that snowplow to move. So, you know, I do love some efficiency, especially this day and age when we're just trying to keep the city moving. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor.
Karen, great presentation, thank you. I saw my street on one of your slides, and I can attest to the fact that, yes, there is, it is an absolute nightmare to get from my neighborhood right now to Aldridge School. Can tell you that I almost had to bring two children's bikes to Bertie's shop there to get the fire truck to wash off all the mud after the most recent melt. So I appreciate that there's some consideration as to what that might look like in the future, so thank you on that. Also, just really do like to hear that, really what we're trying to provide for developers is some consistency and some predictability. What I'm also hearing is that there's also a willingness to have flexibility in that as we get a subdivision plan that comes forward. Yes, you met it, yes, you didn't, here's why, and there's a process there for consideration. So I think overall, that's really good. I think Councilmember Dunn said it well, that just having, having a list and some clear-cut expectations is a benefit to all of us. So, good job, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any last feedback? Any questions for Karen? All right. Otherwise, like I said, we'll be having the, on the April 7th meeting to set the public hearing. Appreciate the conversation, and I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Karen.
Thanks, Karen.
6:40.